Welcome to the City Council Ordinance Committee meeting, June 11th, 7:00 PM. We are having this meeting as a remote meeting. And, you know, I don't, Owen, are we up to date on minutes?
You know, so I don't, I'm not sure. I have to check. So I think that we're a meeting, a meeting or two behind. But there was also a meeting, I thought maybe there were minutes, but we, but someone hadn't looked at them. I'll check, so I think.
It's no worries.
I think it's one or two meetings and I've had all the time in the world and no time in the world. So I'll, I'll take a look.
I hear that. I hear that. And, and we, there's no rule yet that they have to be done in 30 days.
Well, yeah, don't comment. But I'll take a look. I, I think that the last meeting we had, I don't think I did those and I can't remember about the meeting before.
Okay. But when you have a chance, just take a look and, and we can, if you send those out, we can get those approved.
Yeah, I will go back and look at when I sent the last ones out and then work forward from there. So.
Counselor Gomez, how are you?
Good, are you?
Good, good.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks, Owen. Appreciate that.
Yeah, of course.
So I just wanted to just remind you guys that we're going to have a joint public hearing with the planning board on the 23rd. So just make sure you guys have that in your calendars. And so that's going to be to look at the highway business, the highway business amendment to look at the pre-existing buildings. And I wanted to just, just in case we needed to talk about anything before we go to the public hearing. I mean, for me, so I did pull up. Let me just see if I can pull this up here. I did pull up, not that. Sorry, can you guys see all this stuff?
Yes.
Okay. So let me just pull this up. So this. So this was the different options. And I know that we had already kind of taken a look at this, but I just wanted to see if there was any discussion that you guys wanted to engage in before we went to the planning board.
I'm not seeing, I see the agenda.
Wait, you don't, you guys don't see this?
No, I think you need to like click like share with.
Okay.
Or something.
Sorry about that. It says some screen sharing, new share. Here it is. Can I see that now?
Yes.
Right.
Okay. All right. So I just wanted to, you know, take a quick look at this again. See if there, you know, if you guys had any questions, if you had any comments that we wanted to kind of like flush out before we were in the public hearing with the planning board. You know, so, and I, and I think, I don't know if you guys had a chance to go back and watch these, the videos. But, you know, the, the kind of genesis around this was the, the fear that a cannabis company with a bunch of money would come in and build some like unsightly, you know, big grow operation right in the highway business. And so, you know, as we take a look at these, some, some of that concern might still exist at the planning board. You know, me personally, I, I feel like if you can build a new building for another type of business, then you should probably be able to build a new building for a cannabis business. That's my personal feeling. So, you know, I just wanted to check in with you guys because I didn't want us to go into that not being informed or having kind of a, at least some thoughts about where we're going with that. Yes, please, Owen.
So you have to forgive me. So we had talked about these and we, there was one that we agreed on. I don't remember which one it was. I don't think it was option three.
I don't, yeah.
But I can't remember which was option one or two.
I'm, I'm having a hard time remembering exactly which one. Tom, do you remember?
I feel like we were sort of leaning towards one because it's the least sort of invasive or, you know, like.
Yeah.
And, and I think what, what I was saying, and I think you guys more or less agreed with this is that if, if they wanted to start a conversation about adding some additional zoning, sort of, you know, form-based zoning or whatever, onto the highway business district to preserve a certain character, that I'm perfectly willing to have that conversation, but that it should probably apply across use types. Like if I have, if it would be a problem for me to build a massive warehouse to grow cannabis, then it would also be an equal problem for me to grow, build a massive warehouse to like house chickens.
Right.
And, and I mean, for me personally, I, I don't know a whole lot about zoning when it comes to like strictly auto-oriented areas, you know, where there's like, where really like it's like you drive in, you park at a place, you do your business. You like that, that's just something that I personally have not really ever read up on or tried to study in any way. So I don't know what the best practices are there. I don't even know for sure if everyone's on the same page about what they would like that zone to look like, or how they, they would like people to phone, like to operate or to interact with that area. And so there might be a conversation there, and if so, I'm happy to have it. But I don't think you should just single out one industry.
I, I agree. And I think just as like a little historical aside, you know, and it's, it's great that you brought that up. That is something that we have kind of been grappling with for, you know, since I've been on the council is like, what is the highway business zone? What do we want it to look like? Do we want it just to be audio auto-oriented? And every discussion has kind of led to no, we want it to be more, you know, mixed use, multi, like, you know, making the sidewalks wider for, for, you know, multi-use and, and changing the configurations. I think it was maybe five or six years ago, we, we passed some zoning to allow parking lots to be and like change the configuration of the parking lot so they're more bike and pedestrian friendly and greenscaping and things like that. So there has been discussion around that. And there was actually a comprehensive, I don't remember how many years ago, a comprehensive highway business review. And they came out with a, I mean, it ended up being a little bit contentious. I think there was people like the, on, on that review board that kind of butted heads every once in a while. So I don't know if we necessarily got a hugely coherent game plan from that. But I, you know, I think that's the kind of thing that we would want to kind of look to as we, you know, do this, this piece as well. Yeah, Owen.
Yeah, and it's, it's kind of, so what we're talking about is kind of adjacent to our agenda item. And so I don't want to stray too far. But I do want to just kind of support what you both said because, you know, both you and Counselor Peak make a really good point. I think that, you know, we're getting into, in terms of expansion, that the highway, the highway business district is kind of this next logical place. And in terms of, you know, preserving character of the community, it might be something, you know, again, without straying too far out of our agenda, it might be something that we really want to start talking about more sooner rather than later so that we can get on top of it.
Tom?
Right. And, and just sort of echo what you're saying, like, I, I don't want to stray too far from it. My only point in that whole sort of tirade, I guess, was that like, I don't want to necessarily give the impression that I don't care if people like, you know, let, let build massive warehouses or whatever in there. Like, I think there's a valid conversation to be had about what is the appropriate use for that space. Particularly because like you said, it is kind of some of the last developable land in East Hampton. But I also just think that for, for the, for the matters at hand, I'm, I'm personally in favor of option one. And if there's sort of you know, further concerns about that, then my advice would be for us to have a, a deeper conversation about what that should look like.
Yeah.
Yeah, in that regard, I totally agree with you, and especially that, you know, I mean, this is kind of an ongoing trope in a lot of our discussions, but if, you know, we shouldn't create, unless there's a reason to, which I don't personally see here, there's no reason to create zoning that kind of is kind of specifically biased towards a certain industry unless it needs to be. And that goes to another item on our agenda too. You know, if we're going to talk about, you know, use regulations about buildings, like Tom said, it should apply to everything. And so unless like, and you know, again, you can get into, you know, zoning around kind of appearances and things like that. But unless, you know, there's, there's like some like giant neon like cannabis leaf, you know, that might be create, you know, an offensive thing to the community. I mean, but so too, you could have like a giant defensive like side of a car.
Golden arches.
Yeah, exactly. So I agree that we have to be smart about, you know, the more generally sweeping stuff. And I appreciate what, what, what Counselor Peak had to say, because, and I'm, I'm, I'm in line with number one also.
So, yeah, I mean, I think that makes a lot of sense. And, and, you know, I think what I can do just as, as, just for the committee, I can see if I can dig up that highway business report and, you know, maybe this is something that we tackle in the future on a broader scale. You know, not to talk about it too much out of turn. But, um, so do you guys feel comfortable, you know, going into that meeting next week with, you know, supporting option one? And, and that's kind of where we'll go, you know, that'll be, and if, and if they want to add stuff to it, then we can have that discussion at the time. But I think, I think this is a good, I mean, good points and, and it does bring up kind of a larger, you know, piece of the whole highway business in general. Yeah, Owen.
Actually, it might have been option two that we opted for because now that I remember there was the whole discussion of the buildings. And so there, there obviously, I mean, you know, the, it's not really the elephant in the room, but the issue is the parcel in question, which this sort of applies to is that tasty top parcel. And if you go with, if you go with option one, that would effectively disallow them from building any buildings. If I'm.
Right.
So I think it was.
In the highway business, but.
Correct.
Yeah. Or not in highway business, because it would be if we took.
Oh, you're right. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. You're right. So that's right. So, okay, option one is, yeah, never mind.
Yeah, so like downtown, they wouldn't be able to, to build a new business.
Okay, that's right. So you're right. Option one is fine. I apologize. I was reading that wrong.
Because if we did option two, what it would do, I mean, not that I, I think it's bad. But I, you know, because downtown, let's be, let's be real, downtown business includes the hurry and scurry building. You know, I mean, there are some places where building a new building would be absolutely appropriate, you know? So, so, and, you know, I think maybe we can, we can kind of, kind of bounce those two back and forth when, when we're talking with the planning board and, and weigh those, the merits of each of those. I just wanted to make sure that we went into it kind of a little bit, with a little bit of a fresh take on it. So we weren't, hadn't looked at it in a month, you know? So you guys have any other thoughts on this before we, we move on?
No, not really. I mean, I guess my one thing is that I, I think that if this has any value anywhere, like obviously the downtown business district is so intensively used that maybe it's worth being a little bit thoughtful about what you, what you put in there. Which doesn't mean that I'm against option two. I just think there's probably a, maybe there's a, maybe there's a, another conversation that goes on or about, well, do we want to just scrap this entirely versus?
Right.
Well, is this really appropriate in the highway business district?
Sure. So, okay, sounds good. Let me, now let me see if I can switch our screen again. Let me know, did, did your screen switch? Or do I have to do it manually?
Mine's the same.
Nothing's switched yet.
Okay, there you go. All right, so back on, now, one of the things, Owen, I wanted to revisit plastics. Because, you know, I've been thinking a lot about this and I'm like, with the whole COVID-19, I'm so bummed because we, it is such a move away from reusable stuff. And, and, you know, I mean, just kind of inject, like you can't bring a reusable bag into stores right now.
Right.
Now, and, and it's, it's kind of, and like, there was a run on water bottles and a run on takeout food and, and, you know, non-recyclable plastic containers and those types of things. So I feel like this is still really valid, if not, you know, even more than ever. And, and I don't know, I wanted to just check in with the committee to see how you guys felt about starting, like moving this forward, even in the fact that we can't bring, you know, a large public presence. I mean, we, we'll have to do it virtually, you know? But I remember the original thought of kind of holding on to it was we wanted to have more public participation. So I just wanted to put that out there. Yeah, Owen.
Yeah, so I've given this a lot of thought. I mean, so, you know, prior to COVID, there was little to no opposition to this. It really didn't, I didn't really get, you know, other than I think some, some necessity for clarification for businesses. I, I personally did not get really anything about this. And then I was reflecting about kind of, well, you can't use reusable bags now, but even if, even if our ordinance was in effect at this time, then the state, the governor's order would override any local ordinance anyways. So even if we had this now, you know, it doesn't, it, it would still be there, if that makes sense. And people would still be able to use paper and stuff like that. So I think especially also given the fact that the plan would be that this wouldn't even go into effect for a year. And I don't know if this makes sense, and you can tell me if I'm way off base. But the fact, oddly enough too, I think a lot of businesses are in a place where they have an opportunity to reset, reset now and think about how they're going to go, work going forward. That if we start talking about, especially the takeout stuff, then they have, they're coming from a different base of thinking. And a, a year from now, or even if we said a year and a half from now, like I, if we said it goes into effect, then I think that's plenty of time. And theoretically too, we could probably always vote to push that back if it looked like something crazy was going to happen. So I, I don't have a problem moving forward with it, just to get it going. And again, I don't, no one's really, I didn't really get much, you know, concern about it.
Yeah, I didn't either. Though my, the only thing is, and I think this would make sense. I don't, I looked everywhere. I don't have a cop, like an updated copy. In fact, I couldn't even find a copy other than what was in the, the original agenda. So do you think, is that something that you can send out to us?
Absolutely. I think that after our, we had a meeting where we made, we made like a bunch of like, like near final edits and I have that. So I will, I'm sorry, I'm typing while I'm.
Fine.
Yes, I will send that out. I thought I had, but if, but I'll, I'll, no problem. It's, it's on my computer.
Well, I did, I mean, I might have just missed it. I'm not a super huge fan of the, of the Outlook email search. It never gives me what I want. But I couldn't, I couldn't find it, so.
No problem. I can, I can, I, I'll send it, I could probably send it tonight even.
Okay, perfect, perfect. That'd be great. Tom, how do you, how would you feel if we set the public hearing for this and, and our first, well, actually, we could set it our next meeting, I think. And maybe even look at it and try to get it done in July.
I have no issue with that. I, I'd want to, I mean, I, I feel like, I feel like Peg has at times sort of initially at least expressed some caution about discussing like big, like, like too many big things during, like, over the course of this. At this point, I feel like we kind of have to start getting used to that though, just because there's like, it just kind of feels like it's going to be a really long time before we're going to have a room with a hundred people, you know, sitting in, you know, in chairs and discussing these things. You know, we're going to have to start moving forward. So I, I mean, I, I don't have any real opposition. I, I think if, I, I mean, I don't know exactly if this is, is a big deal or not. But I, I mean, I do think that we are definitely in a place where our relationship with a lot of this stuff is kind of an evolving situation. And I don't think it's necessarily unsafe to assume that at some point things will basically be, go, go back to normal. So like the baseline, like that we were seeking to regulate will be very similar. But that is, that's my only very minor concern is just that, that maybe like this ends and as a result of just the way that supply chains and whatnot worked out, things just look so different that like, maybe we need to revisit some, I can't even think of what, but like some aspect of this. These are what I'm kind of getting at.
Oh, absolutely. And I think, and I think that, you know, if we do decide to move this forward, like it has a year grace period and within that time, we might figure some of that stuff out. And we could always just put it right back on the agenda and try to address it even before it would take effect.
Yeah, you're totally right.
And that, you know, and if we can, if we can be, you know, responsive in that way, we, I mean, there's a good chance we might have to be responsive in that way and, and change pieces of it based on the new reality. But, you know, I, I do, A, I don't want it to linger for too much longer because I feel like the longer it lingers, you know, the kind of further removed we get from it. So I, I would like to, and, and I don't necessarily need to set it for July. I mean, if you, if we want to do in August or, you know, I'm kind of, I'm kind of flexible either way, but I, I would like to see this start to move forward just because, like, I don't know when we're going to be able to sit in a room with a hundred people again. You know, yeah, Owen.
I'm thinking August only because I think that there's some stuff coming up on the July meeting, but I might be wrong. There's a couple big-ish public hearings, but maybe I'm remembering that incorrectly. But also I'm just thinking, if we say August, then we can really be proactive and put the word out there. So that if people, you know, if people don't, people have the opportunity to engage and don't want to feel like off guard, like they were caught off guard that we, you know, we decided to do this kind of in the midst of everything that was going on. And, and we can like, you know, really do messaging on social media and maybe even like, you know, I could record like a PSA for, with East Hampton Media just to like go over the details of this so people could, I don't know, I'm just thinking. And I think, am I wrong? Is there a couple of things in the July, the first July meeting or?
I know there's at least one public hearing for the, the thing that, that Omar and I had put.
Facial recognition.
Yeah, so I wouldn't want to dilute that either because that's an important one.
Yeah, it is.
I don't know.
I think that's good. And, you know, also, you know, I just realized, I, I want to make sure that the, the city solicitor has time to take a look at this as well.
Oh, yeah, so do you want me to?
That's, that's one of the reasons why I want to get it, you know, get that copy of it so I can take a look at it.
Okay. Send it over to. I'll send it to you tonight and then, I mean, do we need to meet to decide to send it? Or can I send it to you and you could say?
You can send it to me and, and, you know, I can't remember if we voted it out of committee, like, but you know, I think that it's no problem to say that we're, you know, going to send it to the full council at a, a later date, you know, pending review.
So that's the other thing is that it could take a while for the solicitor to, to review it. So I don't think there's any problem with us getting it out the door to him now and then.
Yeah.
See where it goes from there.
I think that, I think that makes sense. Good. So we're on the same page with plastics. That's great. Now, I mean, we, this agenda is like getting pretty small here, even though we do have some new business coming up. But I, I wanted to, so here's, here's my deal with the residential setbacks because my first inclination was to remove it without prejudice. But I feel like I didn't, I didn't, and this is my fault, I didn't reach out to JP again to, to ask him to come and kind of give his for tonight. So I'm going to give it one more time. And, and if, if he doesn't, then I'm just gonna, I'm just gonna remove it because, A, I, I think what makes sense when we're looking at zoning is not, unless there is a specific issue and reason for an industry to have a special set of zoning, we should have more generalized zoning rules for businesses that aren't high impact or, you know? So I just wanted to, to put that out there and, and I, I feel like that's fair. If you guys, if you guys think that, you know, I really feel really strongly that you want it off the agenda now, then I might consider that, but I think that one more meeting might be, you know, just give a little bit of time.
I think that's a really decent courtesy in general if a counselor submits some things to give them a chance to explain what's going on.
Sounds good. Mr. Zarek.
Thank you, Chairman Derby. Yeah, I agree. I mean, that's throughout this process is really what I've wanted is just some, you know, some ancillary information, a presentation from the presenting counselor. You know, I'm, I'm not in favor of it, but I also didn't want to, I wanted to give the, you know, the author of the, of the ordinance an opportunity to kind of defend it and explain. Because, you know, I'm certainly open-minded and maybe there's something I'm missing. I do have, share your concerns that it seems a little too narrow and focused in regards to one industry. And if, again, I agree with, I agree with you that we have to be careful about, you know, how much we pigeonhole some of our zoning. So, yeah, if you can, if you could track down Counselor Kozinski so he can maybe present it, I, I think that would be.
I'll shoot him an email tonight. Which, which, do you guys, do you guys want to schedule another meeting now? Or do you want to just, do you want to just wait?
Well, I mean, I think in regards to the plastics, that gives us an opportunity also to, to definitely, I think we may have voted, but that gives us an opportunity to definitely vote on that final draft.
Yep. So, I, I mean, so, oh, I guess we're not meeting next week. We're meeting on the 23rd with the planning board. So that's the Tuesday of the following week. Do you, do you want to meet? Like the later that week? Do you, do you want to like meet within two weeks or do you want to push it out a little further? What are you, what are you all thinking?
So on the 23rd, I am technically not here, but I will jump on for that meeting.
Okay.
And so that, that, that week would be difficult for me. The weekend after, the week after would be okay.
The third, the week of the 30th? Or the 29th?
Would probably whichever one, but Tom, what's, what's your schedule like?
Yeah, the week of the 29th looks pretty much fine for me. As, I mean, other than city council, which we all have.
Right, on the first.
Yes.
The second week, well, the first full week in, in July, the week of the 6th looks good except for Monday.
Okay.
So either of those would be okay. Definitely the week of the, the, the week of the 22nd is a little busy on my end. But I mean, it's not impossible.
So do you, do you guys want to shoot for like the 7th of July? Tuesday, the 7th?
Well, strategically. Strategically, is there any, is there any, if we, if we have a meeting before the first in regards to the plastic stuff?
Yeah, that might make sense, actually.
And then, and then in that regard too, do you want, so I could send you the, I could send you the language tonight and then we could theoretically send it to the solicitor ASAP.
Yeah.
I don't know. I'm just wondering if there's, if we need to do that in regards to, like, when would you plan to set that?
Well, I'm probably, probably the July 1st meeting. So you want to, you guys want to try to do Tuesday, the 30th and just go back to back?
Yeah, as far as I know, that works for me. My, my schedule is a little weird right now. I'd probably have to do another seven o'clock meeting. I could theoretically do like a little after six, but I might be, I might be mobile at the time.
There's no reason for you to rush. Let's do seven o'clock.
Okay.
I mean, I know it's tight for you tonight, so, right? So let's, let's just, I mean, we could even do 7:30. This isn't anywhere near my bedtime.
Yeah, I mean, tonight I, I had, I, that's up to you guys. I also don't want to, you know, I, I want to defer to the rest of the, I mean, whatever. Seven, seven works. I'm just working in Springfield till six now on some days, so.
Tom, does seven work for you?
Seven's fine for me.
Okay, so let's do Tuesday, June 30th at 7:00 PM?
Great, thanks, thanks.
All right, awesome. And, and I don't have anything else unless you guys do.
Uh, let me just look, I just want to look, so that's June 30th at 1900 hours. And I just want to double check that I don't have another haircut. And I just want to double-check that I don't have another haircut. No, I don't.
Okay.
Yeah, that's good, thanks for your flexibility.
No problem.
My colleagues, I just, things are a little upside down for me right now.
It honestly works out pretty well for me because my day job is, uh, sort of crazy, so not, like, all these meetings have been like 5:30 start times, have meant me have, like, having to like go straight from day job to city council stuff, so these later meetings, um, it's, it's not, it's not necessarily a bad thing.
Cool, sounds good. And, hey, Omar, do you want any public speak? I can, I can reopen public speak if you have something you want to talk about.
No, I'm good, thank you, uh, Chairman. I just want to hear everything, it's easier for me to, uh, to be part of the meeting instead of watching the videos.
Yeah, 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 no, thanks for coming.
Yeah, sure.
Alright, I'm, I'm willing to entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Alright, let's, uh, let's see, Owen?
Aye.
Mr. Peak?
Aye.
Alright, and I will vote yes too. Thanks for coming tonight, guys. And, um, if you can send that over, that'd be great, and we'll, we'll get all that stuff taken care of.
Yeah, let me, I'll look for it right as I log off, thanks, thanks so much.
Awesome, we'll see you guys soon.
Okay, be safe.
Yeah, bye.